Okay, we're ready to start and then we'll actually go into a formal roll call. The seventh special meeting of the Lynn School Committee will be held on Monday, July 27th, 2020 at 6:00 PM via Zoom, who are out right now pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order acting pursuant to the powers provided by chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950 in section 2A of chapter 17.
I'm going to mute everybody. Go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
He has to unmute himself.
Oh, dear.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
I am? Okay. Again, I'll start again pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order acting pursuant to the powers provided by chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950, section 2A of chapter 17 of the Massachusetts general laws. The meeting chambers will be closed to the public. However, the meeting will be made available to the public by adequate alternative means, that being Lynn community television and/or video conference recording. And as Dr. Tutwiler has indicated, there are also a number of people that will be joining us and I'd just ask as they join to not join with their video. Obviously, they can, everybody can watch us, but with too many on the video, it may disrupt the meeting. But we actually welcome whoever can be joining us as long as they don't sign on with the video. So with that, we're ready to go into the meeting. And before we get into the formal meeting, I'd like to ask Man to do a roll call of the members and then a roll call of the others that are at the meeting. So with that, we'll start the roll call. Pat, did you, is she unmuted?
He has to do it herself.
Okay.
Man, do you remember the button we were just talking about? You have to push it where it says mute next to the video? And are we recording already?
Nope. Uh, that was my fault. It's recording now.
Man.
Do you want me to take?
There she goes.
There she goes, okay.
We can hear you.
Okay. Mr. Cassianus?
Present.
Ms. Capola?
Present.
Mr. Ford? I see him. Ms. Gately? Okay, good. Ms. Gately? Present. Uh, Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Ms. Sadowite?
Present.
Ma' Maggie?
Present.
And in attendance is, uh, Mr. Dr. Tutwiler?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Powers?
Present.
Uh, John Mahos? No?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And Mary Jewels?
Present.
And Kevin McHugh is also on the call?
I didn't get that.
Kevin McHugh, I think, is on the call on Zoom. Is that correct? And Deputy Superintendent Deborah Jarrow.
Okay, got it.
I'm here, present.
Thanks, Kevin.
And Kevin, I got Kevin.
And Deputy Superintendent Deborah Jarrow is also.
I got her, thank you.
Okay, great. And I, as I know, just started the recording, so I'm just going to repeat this. I know it's the second time. Um, this is the seventh special meeting of the school committee, Monday, July 27th, 2020, 6:00 PM via Zoom pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order acting pursuant to the powers provided by chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950 in section 2A of chapter 17 of the Massachusetts general laws. The meeting chambers will be closed to the public. However, the meeting will be made available to the public by adequate alternative means, that being Lynn community television and/or a video conference recording. And has been stated as well by me and on the chat, I will just reiterate it one more time, that non-school committee members that are on, we welcome you, but would ask that you stay muted and off video so that the meeting can proceed. With that, I would ask everyone to join. Um, and I think there is a flag that is available to join us in a salute to the flag of the United States of America. And I have a flag here as well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, first on the agenda is minutes. Uh, and for the 12th regular meeting of the executive session and the fifth special meeting of the executive session, though, a personnel subcommittee meeting, and again, those are on June 25th, June 30th, July 16th, and the sixth special meeting on July 16th as well in 2020. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Um, can I speak to the?
Please, Member Sadowite, please speak to those.
Thank you. So based off of my records and how the votes went down, it looks like they're not accurately reflected. I don't know if, um...
If they? Was, were they posted incorrectly?
Yes. So for at least one of the positions that we voted on in, in, in the meeting with regards to who was for and who, who was, who was against, who approved it and who declined to approve it. So I, I think that we need to properly record that and I, I caught it just before the meeting, so I didn't, um...
Okay.
Wasn't able to get it to anybody.
So what we can do is, I would say, the, the meeting, the minutes that reflect the appropriate information, we can accept and we can postpone acceptance of the, of the minutes to the next meeting if that's, is that appropriate, John Mahos? I would suggest, I would suggest, is, is John, John, can you hear us? Is John on the call? Do we know? I know he was earlier.
Yeah, he just responded.
Hello? John?
Yep.
So the suggestion is that we accept the minutes, one of the minutes was posted incorrectly, that we put that minute acceptance off to the next meeting and then we accept the other minutes of the other meetings appropriate, that were appropriately posted. Is that, uh, just making sure that that action is one that's an appropriate one to take? So if that's the case, I'd ask Michael for you to make a motion to, um, accept the minutes of the meetings that were appropriately posted and reflect the meeting.
So, so the only ones that are, are not accurately reflected with regards to the roll call has to do with the deputy superintendent's contract that we approved. So, you know, I can make a motion to approve the minutes that are presented to us today with the exception of fixing the roll call votes for that particular position.
Okay, that'd be perfect. So there's a motion on the table to accept. And what, Michael, what's, just so for the record, which, which date of the minutes is, which one that's listed would be the one we're not accepting tonight?
Uh, we're accepting, we're, we're still going to accept all of them and there should be a correction made prior to, that's the way I presented the, the vote, but if that's incorrect, then I can...
I think the, I think the best one, is that the way to do it, John?
Yeah, if they could amend, amend the minutes as reflected by Mr. Sadowite and accept them as amended.
Okay.
Put it off to the next meeting, it's up to you.
I wouldn't, if, if, Michael, if you want to do that, we can accept them as, you can amend them and then we'll accept them all.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so it'd just be the June 25th executive session with regards to the vote for, what I have for Deputy Superintendent Ms. Powers is they weren't all yes votes. There was one, which was Mr. Nicholson, that, that voted no on that. Mr. Nicholson, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then when we got into the regular session, again, he, he voted a no, not a yes. Uh, so that should accurately reflect that. It's, it was not a, a, a yes through, uh, through the members.
Okay. So that amendment's on the table to amend those minutes and I'm going to ask for a roll call on that. There's a motion. Well, is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, roll call, please.
Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowite?
Yes.
Ma' Maggie?
Yes. So with that, I'm open to a, a motion for, to accept all four of the meetings, minutes.
Motion to accept the, the meetings with the amendment just made.
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Ms. Capola? Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowite?
Yes.
And Ma' Maggie?
Yes. Great. Thank you, Member Sadowite, for, uh, for moving those motions through. Uh, next on the agenda is appointments and I'd ask Dr. Tutwiler, um, those two appointments, if you could speak to those, please.
Gladly, Mayor. Um, the two appointments that we're happy to celebrate this evening, the first is the new appointment to the department head for science at Lynn English High School. Uh, that individual is named Jill Joyce and we're thrilled to welcome her to that very important role, wishing her the best of luck. Uh, and the other appointment is for, uh, to fill an opening at Marshall Middle School in the position of guidance counselor. Uh, they selected John Gore to fulfill that role. I also want to extend to him our very best in his work with us going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. Um, Member Ga, uh, Member Gately?
I would just to congratulate you, Jill Joyce, who worked for me for years at Pickering Middle School and I'm so happy to see you going to be in charge of the Lynn English High School Science Department. Big congratulations from me.
Great. Any other comments? With that, just congratulations to both Jill and John. We wish you the best and good luck in your new roles. Onto new business. And I'm going to ask Dr. Tutwiler to speak to this. The first on the agenda is storage space at the Lynn Armory on South Carmen Street.
Yeah, you know, as we've mentioned in previous meetings and as is, you know, I think pretty, you know, common knowledge, uh, in order to effectively create learning spaces where we can achieve the physical distancing requirements set by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we, we're going to need to move furniture and stuff out of classrooms to create that space. Uh, as you might imagine, uh, there, there's very little storage space in Lynn Public Schools. I mean, even historically, we've struggled to find appropriate storage space. But, um, we knew that in this, in this context, we were going to need something substantive and something outside of the Lynn Public Schools buildings. And so, uh, two weeks ago, myself, um, Robin Ennis, Joe Smart, uh, we toured both the armory and, um, the, the main building of the armory as well as the garage behind the building on, uh, South Carmen Street. Uh, it is, it more than meets our needs. Uh, and I believe that space is currently, uh, under the ownership of Lynn Housing. And so, uh, you know, I, I can defer to John Mahos here for the specifics around the law, but it does require, uh, a school committee vote to, um, you know, allow us to proceed with use of that space for storage.
Member Sadowite, then Member Ford?
Um, this is a question to both Mayor McGee and to Patrick Tutwiler. I, I believe that that was transferred over to Lynn Housing or the City of Lynn from the state to combat our homelessness issue. Um, is that correct, Mayor McGee?
Yes, it is. Um, it's actually, it's, it's the neighborhood development, um, of the Lynn Housing Authority. That, that process continues, so it's a good question, I think. So what's the timing and how long?
Correct.
Uh, and I want to thank the Housing Authority for being willing to work with us. It was going to be, I think, more of a substantial cost, higher cost, or really a challenge to find some other locations. Uh, so I think in turn, and Pat, maybe you can speak to this and John, but in terms of over the next, I would think at least, uh, year, that should not be an issue in, in terms of that. And then it will give us time if that is going to be, um, um, changed, that we could have a quick turnaround and we can look at other options. Uh, but it's a quick turnaround to get it going right now and get everything in there. It's a, and I didn't get a chance to see it, but I know I was out of the discussions. I think it's a really good solution short term and if we need a longer term solution, it gives us time to, to explore, um, cost effective and other, uh, locations that would meet the requirements. But, um, that is still an ongoing process with waiting for some, um, historic tax credit approval at the federal government level and other work that we're doing to fund that. But that doesn't mean the project is not happening. It's just in the meantime, it gives us an opportunity to find, um, space for what we need and for them to, I think, you know, there will be some conversation that will be going to the NDA that, uh, that is much more appropriate than what would have been otherwise. So I think it's a win, um, a win-win. Um, and, and like I said, we'll have a timeline and, and, um, if we have to move out of it, we'll know what that looks like. Uh, but it, it should not be within the, within the, you know, next eight or 10 months at least. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, then we'll go to Member Ford.
Yeah, just quickly, um, you know, when we toured, they made clear that, you know, they haven't secured financing for, uh, that housing project. It was going to be at least a year.
Right.
So, um, we, you know, a year would buy us enough time, um, you know, because we're, we're kind of in a pinch on time, uh, to, you know, do our moving project here safely and securely, stow, uh, our furniture and various other items safely there. Um, and, you know, we've got time to look for another storage opportunity if the need arises.
Thank you. And I think the important point is it's a really quick turnaround so we can get that equipment in there quickly in more than enough time to do what we need to do to free up the space in the school. So I want to thank everyone involved in, uh, working on this and, and we'll keep, I know we'll keep the committee informed as, uh, as changes might need to be made. But I, I think the point's well taken, Dr. Tutwiler. There, there's a lot of work that's going into that, that project. Um, positive, it's still very positive, but it's, it's going to take time and we can, we can take advantage of it now. Member Ford?
Yeah, I was just, um, under the impression that that was going to be for, for veterans' housing, which has been delayed. Uh, and based on that, I would like to authorize the superintendent to enter a rental lease agreement for the purpose of storage property for LPS at 38 South Carmen Street owned by Neighborhood Development Association, Inc. The annual rental fee should not exceed $10,000.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Any comments that need to be made or, John Mahos, is there anything else we need to know as, um, as we take that motion under consideration?
Well, it's an exception to the, to the bidding law so far as it's a nonprofit that's, uh, we'll be renting from, you know, municipal entity and it's less than $10,000. So it's profitably before the body.
Okay.
And Tom, do we, do we need to add anything in there that talks about giving Patrick authorization to sign it or is it going to?
That's a good point. John, is that, is that what we're authorizing tonight, that the superintendent can then make, sign that document to, to?
Exactly. The motion should be to authorize the superintendent to enter negotiations for the purposes of renting the property, uh, as described by school committee member Ford, uh, under the rental value of $10,000 per year.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion on the table and seconded, requires a roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowite?
Yes.
Ma' Maggie?
Yes. Great. Thank you all and thanks for all the work that went on, um, to make that a reality. I know there was a lot of, uh, time and effort trying to figure out what would work and that's a great, you know, great, definitely a great interim opportunity. Um, next is the survey results. Dr. Tutwiler, uh, would you like to, uh?
Yeah.
Please, yeah?
Indeed. Uh, so I'm going to share my screen here. One second. Uh, thumbs up if you can see that. The reopening survey? Okay. Good, 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 good. Uh, what is, what are we getting? All right. One second here. All right, uh, still thumbs up if you can see it. All right, great. Uh, as promised, um, you know, we wanted to share out, um, uh, some high level takeaways from, uh, the surveys that we administered for staff, LPS staff, students in grade six to 12, um, as well as, um, our families. Um, one second here. I'm, I'm going, I'm doing double duty here. I should have made someone else a co-host because I'm also managing the wait, waiting room. Uh, one second, I'll just admit all these folks. Good to go. Okay. Um, as has been mentioned on many, many occasions before, uh, we intend for our planning processes to be input and/or feedback rich. Uh, relative to reopening, there are big areas on which we sought input or help with our planning. Uh, we wanted to gauge the readiness to return, solicit input to determine areas of focus, uh, and we're always interested in our community's perspective. Uh, and of course, uh, it is critical, uh, to assess, um, different areas of need. A little slow here. There we go. Uh, in developing the survey, we drew from questions we were receiving from members of the community, both staff, uh, and, and parents and believe it or not, students have not been shy about, uh, sending in emails and asking questions. Uh, of course, the reopening guidance, uh, drove a number of the questions that we, that we asked. Finally, in my humble opinion, uh, and I don't mean this in any disrespectful way, but Massachusetts is a little behind other states in terms of, uh, their preparation for the upcoming school year. Uh, and this might be due in large part to, um, when we start our school year. Uh, nonetheless, there are a number of surveys already out there, uh, in different school districts and, uh, in other states, uh, and we use them as a resource in developing ours. Uh, a quick note on our survey and surveys in general, uh, we obviously could have asked more questions than we did. Uh, we really wanted to see, uh, a high number of completed surveys and that we were, um, really aware of, uh, survey fatigue, especially this being our, our fourth or fifth since March with family. Um, we really had to drill down on what we thought was core to our planning and presented our questions accordingly. Uh, what I've done here, uh, is assemble some of the more salient takeaways from the survey, uh, from the surveys that we administered for those three groups. Uh, in the slides to come, you'll see a graph representation or an actual quantitative, uh, representation of the responses. I chose between the two based on how important it was to see either a visual or the actual number. All right, let me just admit some more people here. Okay. Um, first I'll say that we did better on this survey than any survey, uh, in previous months, or at least since I've been superintendent. Uh, the effort was gargantuan with both students and families. Given that we have, uh, 10,237 households with school age children in the Lynn Public Schools, I'd say that I'm pretty pleased with the family participation of 4,369. Uh, and I want to thank our families for offering such substantive feedback. It's really important, uh, the, the feedback that they offered and, uh, they were also very dutiful in offering narrative feedback. Uh, having said that, I would have liked for the student, uh, participation to be a little bit higher, uh, and our staff typically, uh, participate in high numbers. Give me one second while I admit somebody. Uh, I've grouped the slides according to the focus areas that I described in the beginning, uh, gauging readiness, determining areas of focus, gathering perspective and assessing need. Starting with gauging readiness, here you can see that the majority of the respondents are either very or somewhat comfortable with returning to school, to, to in-person instruction and these are students. Uh, but at the same time, a smaller group, a little more than 20%, expressed discomfort with returning at all. Asking the same question of families, you can see that the majority of the respondents are, are prepared to, to send their children for in-person instruction in the fall. Interesting to note the maybe response in yellow down at the bottom. Uh, there's a lot of narrative feedback there. Uh, suffice to say that many of the responses were anchored in wanting to know what the plan was going to be before, uh, they committed to sending their kid back for in-person instruction or knowing more about, um, the health context, uh, at the time, meaning if there was a spike of some sort, then they would be less comfortable, obviously, with sending their, um, student back for in-person instruction. Um, I also want to note that in blue, um, the number of, um, families that indicated that they would not be sending their student for in-person instruction, uh, the, the total sum of that in terms of students, uh, was roughly 1,300. Uh, so that's a fairly significant, um, uh, you know, a number of students based on the number of families that responded and, you know, no matter what, I mean, given the size of our district, uh, that is not a small number of students who, uh, families have already indicated, uh, they will not send, uh, in the fall. Uh, just to be clear, uh, we captured, we asked families to, um, both give the name of the student, the student ID, the student's grade that they would be in, uh, in the fall, uh, and their school, just so we can collect that data and begin to prepare for, uh, servicing those students' needs remotely.
I, I have a question, Dr. Tutwiler.
Go ahead, Mayor.
That's okay. Uh, typically, and I know this is a survey, not a poll, but there is a pretty broad cross section. Uh, so I guess the question is, is there a cross section of families? Can you identify that? And do you think those numbers are reflective of, uh, if you went to 70% of the survey or 80%, that those numbers would translate reflective of what you're seeing here on this, um, readiness for returning? I know, and, and it may not reflect at all, but I, I don't know if there's a way to understand whether that, those that didn't respond either reflect, uh, the similar percentage or not, I guess is the question.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you're never going to get 100% participation, uh, on a survey. And so much as, you know, when, uh, you know, in the, in the political realm, when they do a poll, they do a sample size that, you know, sort of matches the, uh, broad demographics of a particular community. Here I would say, um, statistics would suggest that what we're seeing here, um, is, is significant. Um, we did not do the, I think it'd be what's called a one or two-tailed test, um, a statistical analysis that I don't know how to do. Uh, Josh Moore would probably be much better apt to doing something like that and I think I saw his name, um, on the call. But there is a, a statistical analysis you can do to determine whether or not, uh, the participation was significant. I, I'd say that, um, from what I know about that science, um, typically if you get participation around 35, 40%, it's considered significant. Uh, and so what we did not do, um, in this survey is collect, uh, demographic data, like I didn't ask about, uh, you know, race, I didn't, um, you know, ask, you know, boys or girls, things of that nature. We did do, uh, demographics in terms of... things of that nature. We did do, uh, demographics in terms of, um, the schools, um, that families were represented or that their children are in. The families completing the survey, um, have not yet drilled down to that, uh, level of specificity to say, geez, you know, um, there seems to be, um, you know, more, more families with elementary-age students who don't want to do, uh, in-person instruction or middle or high or something of that nature. Have not yet done that, but that's just, you know, frankly, uh, once the, the names are, uh, concatenated in a, in a spreadsheet, we can just sort it and, and figure that out pretty quickly. Um, but here I think the big takeaway is, um, that the majority of families are indicating that they would, um, be interested in sending their, their kid for in-person instruction, and, uh, the maybe is just reading that narrative data. Uh, it all depends on where we are, uh, in the city and, and, and maybe beyond, um, with, um, with cases or whether or not, you know, uh, a vaccine has been discovered by that point, which I, I think we can all say definitively, probably not, um, but, but that's where we are on that.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. And let me just admit a few more folks here and keep it pushing. Alright. Uh, staff overwhelmingly indicated an intention to return, but as you can see, many are concerned about the health and safety issues. Uh, the blue line, uh, the second line down reflects the choice that read "return, but I'm nervous." Uh, as one would suspect, there are a number of staff who have questions and concerns related to medical conditions that they might have or for, uh, around loved ones with whom they reside. Um, those are, are things that, you know, um, you know, we'll need to determine in the coming days and weeks. Uh, but here again, uh, I think, you know, between, uh, the top two, the green line, uh, red, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to return and, uh, I'm fine, I'm not, have no concerns, I think we'll be safe. Uh, and the blue line says, "I'm ready to return, but I'm nervous." Uh, you'll, you'll notice that, uh, one of the two options in this item, if you can see it, uh, is resign or retire. Um, it's what, I think it's the orange one, the second to the last, uh, on the bottom. Uh, I just want to let you know that we're watching this very closely. Uh, as of the close of FY twenty, uh, there were fewer retirements than in previous years, uh, for that fiscal year. Uh, this of course could change in the, in the coming months, uh, for FY twenty-one, but I just wanted to point that out, uh, that A, we're watching that, uh, and B, right now, uh, it appears as though, um, there aren't, uh, numbers of folks opting for that, um, path, uh, given the context that we're in. Um... This is a little bit hard to read, but, uh, I'll, I'll walk you through it. Uh, when determining areas of focus, we really thought, uh, to drill down on where the biggest need is. Uh, on this item, we asked families to identify the three areas on which they believe their student would need support, uh, upon returning. Uh, there was a lot of agreement among families that adjusting to new routines, uh, will be key in this scenario. Uh, a close second to that involves academics, and more specifically, re-engaging with it in ways that, um, they did not, uh, between the months of, uh, March and June, and maybe have not ever before. Uh, but the key here is that, uh, families seemed really, um, interested and concerned about, um, how we're, uh, gonna transition kids back and what their, the new routines would look like and how we're, uh, familiarizing students, um, with those new routines. Uh, hang on a second, okay. Uh, here again, uh, the general question of what support would be most valuable to a family. Um, academic support in reading and math was the top vote getter, followed by getting help with, uh, students in terms of organizing their work. Uh, I would also note the substantive response around technology. Uh, that's the second from the bottom. Families indicated, uh, the importance of technology, uh, and, and the role that it'll play uh, in their students' education going forward. Uh, and in just a few slides, you'll see that the staff is also equally, uh, concerned about that. Also maybe a little, little hard to see here, the, the verbiage, but I'll explain what's on there. Uh, as we know, we're required, uh, as, as you all know, we're required to develop, uh, an in-plan... Ooh, hold on. Hmm, this seems to be a slide behind, that's interesting. Uh, but I'll explain anyway. Um, we're required to develop a plan for in-person, hybrid, and remote scenarios. Uh, for the in-person and hybrid scenarios, we asked families what they would prefer. Nope, I'm actually spot on. Uh, we asked families what they would prefer to be prioritized during that time. Overwhelmingly, families chose, uh, the so-called core content areas, uh, English, Math, Science, Social Studies, um, and things of that nature, followed by supports in foundational areas such as reading and math. And so here, again, um, we just wanted to understand, uh, what families thought would be important to be happening during in-person, uh, learning time. Similarly, uh, the students who indicated, who responded to the, um, to the survey indicated a strong interest in these, uh, so-called core content, uh, areas, um, during in-person instruction. However, uh, they would also like to see, uh, the so-called, uh, elective coursework such as art, music, phys ed, uh, and things of that nature. In thinking about a return scenario, we asked students on what they would need the most support. There's strong agreement among students that adjusting to new school routines needs to be a point of emphasis in our planning. Similar to the family response, they also indicated a need for support in re-engaging with academic work. I actually thought that was really interesting. We asked the staff, uh, on which areas they believe students would need support upon return. They agree with students in their indication of adjusting to the routines. Interestingly, uh, staff also believes that there'll be a need for social-emotional support. Uh, families and students indicated this to a far lesser degree. This is actually something that we, um, talked about a little bit in the, um, virtual town hall that, uh, we just had with staff about an hour ago. Uh, there were some questions about, uh, what sort of social-emotional supports would be available for students. Clearly, um, I, I'd say here, uh, students and their families are more concerned about things in the academic realm, uh, but we know from a, you know, sort of a research and scientific standpoint that, um, we're gonna need to take care of, um, their mental, uh, and emotional health, uh, first and foremost before we can get to reading, writing, and arithmetic. In thinking about communication, we wanted to make sure that going forward, uh, we are putting emphasis on the things that families really want to hear about. Uh, the two big vote getters are, um, the extent to which we are aligning with, um, DESI or CDC guidance. Uh, that's the green one at the top. Uh, and then again, uh, families are deeply interested in or concerned about, uh, academics and wanting to hear specifics around how that's going to be done. Um, and so that will be a point of emphasis, uh, in our communications. And, uh, on that note, um, these two, uh, items or choices, alignment with guidance, uh, and a focus on, uh, teaching and learning, information about that, drove, uh, the decision for, um, the two town halls that we've got scheduled with the community to be just on those two topics. Um, and actually spending, uh, uh, you know, one evening on one around the, the health and safety piece, which is all about alignment with, with the guidance, and then another evening around, uh, teaching and learning.
Dr. Tawila, I know you're gonna take questions when we're done, but just, uh, so what's around food? Uh, was that, was there articulated, uh, what those concerns are and how we could be addressing them, or?
Yeah. Well, I, I did not present that, um, that question to you, but, uh, we've asked that on a number of surveys. And, um, that one has co- actually, uh, well, you can see it right there. Um, the, the, the response is, is small. Um, and, you know, uh, from our standpoint, we're going to continue to, um, address, uh, food insecurity, uh, as a, as a priority because we know, um, that there are families that are, that have, uh, needs. Uh, but insofar as it relates to those who responded to the survey, uh, it seems as though they want to hear more about, um, other, other topics. Uh, but we will continue to address that. Um, that, that is for us core.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, uh, I mean, we've, we've, we've talked a lot, uh, about, uh, you know, meeting family needs, um, uh, pivoting to assessing need, that, um, pillar for the, for all three surveys. Although we've created a mechanism for fam- families who do not have internet connections in their home, the respondents in this survey overwhelmingly indicated that they do have reliable internet access in their home. Uh, this will be a factor that's critical, uh, for hybrid and remote learning scenarios as we look ahead, uh, to planning for the fall. Uh, I should note here that families who indicated that, uh, that they did not have, uh, reliable internet access in the home, the survey provided them a phone number to call, uh, so that we can get them set up with our, uh, partnership or our agreement, uh, with Comcast. Um, so I, I think we're well on our way in that realm. Uh, we also asked staff, uh, this is probably more of a perspective question, um, what they thought would be most valuable in terms of support for families. Uh, and they indicated, as you can see here, the sort of teal color toward the bottom very strongly, uh, that families are gonna need support around technology, particularly as we begin, uh, a new era, um, with our, uh, learning management system, Schoology. Uh, both students and families are gonna need support, uh, in effectively and successfully, um, accessing that. And so, um, you know, wonderful feedback from, from staff that, um, is gonna drive our planning around providing supports, uh, for families on the technology, uh, piece. Now, the le- next slide has a lot of text, um, in the, you know, in terms of the question. Uh, I'll explain what it is, you don't have to read it all. Um, and you'll notice, um, that all of our, uh, for students and for families, all of our surveys, uh, were in both English and Spanish. We wanted to, uh, eliminate, uh, any barriers to access, um. And so, uh, in thinking about perspective, uh, we asked students, staff, and parents and guardians, uh, about which hybrid model they would prefer. They were asked to rank four models according to which one they preferred most. Uh, the four models presented are, are the models most frequently discussed. That's a half-day model, uh, where half of your students come in for half the day, they go home, and the other half, uh, come in for the remainder of the day. Um, uh, a one-day rotation where students receive one day of in-person instruction each week, uh, and the rest is done remotely. Uh, a two-day model where they receive instruction two days a week, and the rest is done remotely. Uh, and then, um, an A-B model where you have, you know, you know, essentially, uh, or theoretically, half of your students in, uh, on Week A, and then they learn remotely the following week, and the other half would learn in-person, uh, while the first half is learning remotely. Um... Uh, the bar graph, uh, extends to the right based on the number, uh, of students who prioritize that model as their first or second choice. Uh, here it's clear that the students prefer the one-day or two-day mob- hybrid model. Uh, the one-day model received the most votes, uh, as, uh, a first choice for students. Families, uh, you can see here, um, felt partial to, uh, the two-day model overall. And staff, uh, voted in the same manner, clearly choosing the two-day model, uh, over the other models. Uh, and I want to be clear, um, you know, we, we just finished a, um, uh, the virtual town hall, uh, with staff, was sort of giving updates, and it was really more of a listening session than anything else, but, um, you know, the question was asked by, uh, one staff member, you know, are we talking to or planning with other districts, um, you know, particularly other urban districts? And, uh, the first part of that answer is, is, is yes, absolutely, talking to them. As the co-chair of the Urban Superintendent Network, uh, I, I am on and slash facilitate, uh, most of the meetings. Um, but, but I'd say it's really challenging for us to plan together given the difference of the variability in districts', uh, realities. Uh, but I will say, overall, whether it's North Shore Districts or urban districts, um, by far the most popular hybrid model is the two-day model. Uh, I think, uh, Boston declared last Thursday that, uh, their hybrid model, uh, across the board was gonna be a two-day model. We also asked, uh, staff which element of the guidance, uh, they believe students and families would take issue. Uh, it's no surprise, uh, in the blue there that, um, the, the mask piece has been a, a point of contention in many realms. Um, here I'm just sort of sharing that staff believe that this is going to be an issue. Um, I will say that, um, well, you're gonna see it in just a second. We did ask students about wearing a mask also, um, and, uh, there's sort of some mixed results there. And I would say, um, it's sort of unsolicited emails that I receive from families, which I welcome and appreciate, uh, a number of them have been about, uh, the mask, and they're like evenly split. Do it, don't do it. Um... It's no surprise, but the staff is clearly, clearly has a, a pulse on the student body. When asked about comfort with wearing a mask to school, a slight majority of the students indicated that they were either a little comfortable or not comfortable at all, uh, wearing a mask to school. One student, uh, put in the narrative feedback, uh, uh, that he would drop out, uh, if he had to wear a mask to school. Uh, now, obviously, that student's not gonna drop out, but I think he's trying to underscore how adamantly he's opposed to that. Um, I think here, and this is not a space for, you know, you know, where decisions are gonna be made at this point in this discussion, um, but I'd say that, um, you know, I, I think we really need to be very clear, um, and very firm with what the in-person experience is, is about. And then, uh, we're also required, uh, per the DESI guidance to provide families an opportunity to, um, uh, opt out of in-person instruction and just do remote learning. And so I'd say that those who feel really strongly that, uh, the mask is, you know, who don't have a medical concern or a sensory issue, but just don't want to wear the mask, then, uh, they, they might want to opt for, uh, a remote learning, uh, situation. Um, shifting to, and I'm, I'm getting near the end here. Um, shifting to a couple of points of interest from the survey, uh, we know that the transportation guidance, uh, makes clear that, um, you know, w- we can only accommodate about one-third of the normal capacity, uh, on a bus, uh, at any time. uh at any time, one student per seat, uh things of that nature, except for siblings. Uh DESI encouraged us to, and they're all districts, to see uh if families would be willing to drive their students. Uh and just by way of rule, if a student's on an I E P and the parent and a feature of that I E P is that they receive transportation, and the parent elects to drive that student, uh they would be reimbursed for the mileage. Uh what you can see here, oops, uh what you can see here uh very clearly is um that uh families will don't want to drive their children to school. Um and so um I think that uh this the majority of the respondents um who, again, I asked only if their child was on an I E P, just to get a sense for where we are, um many said no, the vast majority said no. Uh and so uh I believe Dave Hegan is is watching right now. We we know that transportation is going to be uh a challenge for us uh as we look ahead to the fall.
You said it says no on this, uh Patrick?
What's that?
I I see the majority sa- say yes. Am I reading it wrong?
Oh, I I I apologize. Uh not applicable. You're correct. Uh I the yellow is not applicable. Uh the no is is actually favorable. Good point. I'm sorry. My 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 mistake. Good catch. Uh yet and still, um we know that this is not the entirety of uh our bus-riding community, uh and we know even with that number of noes, uh the challenge still exists. Uh or the, excuse me, even with that number of yeses, the challenge still exists around um getting uh our bus riders uh to school, to enjoy a full day of school. Um yeah, you know, we we'd be talking about uh multiple runs beyond the number of runs that we already um that we already do. Thank you for that, uh Michael. And finally, um uh we've a number of staff uh on this uh call right now. Uh in the staff survey, we asked them if they would um if they would consider about their willingness to return on August thirty-first to begin for professional development in preparation for the year. To be clear, um in that survey, um there was a proposal of school starting uh that same week uh on the um second. Um there's some late-breaking information. It's actually related to the other agenda item um uh of the meeting around the uh calendar uh that would result in a difference, but I think the point here is to underscore that uh overwhelmingly, the staff indicated a willingness to come back uh on eight thirty-one. Now, I'm happy to answer questions.
Students from the committee? Uh member, let me, I'm sorry. Member Castellanos, the member Nicholson. The member Sadoway, I'm sorry, I'm a smaller screen. Um so, member Castellanos, member Nicholson, member Sadoway.
All right, I'm just uh, sorry guys, I'm just trying. Patrick, would you be able to get rid of the screens? That I'm just looking at like the question box. I can't see anybody's face. Is that still?
Great. How's that?
Thank you.
Better. Thanks, Art. Thank you so much um for the presentation. Um so I just have a quite a couple of questions about um where the areas of focus for families, adjusting to new routines um and transition transitioning back into school? The academic support piece, what's that gonna look like, especially when we when we talk about new routines, transitioning back into, you know, our new kind of normal? What pops up is um kids with I E Ps. How are s- uh how how are we preparing? I know P D is gonna be starting up. I know P D is a big hot item as well. How are we preparing our staff and and the families in terms of for that start day? Because I feel like that that start day seems very expedite. Get everyone into a a a routine. Um a- a- as you see, there was sixty-nine point, what, sixty, almost seventy percent were pointing as an area of focus. What does that look like? How how are we gonna be able to really accommodate that? Um because, you know, when it comes to scheduling, uh spa services, speech, I I kind of just kind of get overwhelmed on how we gotta really effectively um help them adjust.
Yeah, so um uh I think the quick answer to that is slowly. Um you know, th- there's so much that's different. Uh there's so much that needs to be learned. Uh there's so much that uh folks need to appoint themselves with. Uh you know, the the fast answer is how are you going to, you know, A, the the adults have to be prepared and ready and knowledgeable and comfortable with uh you know, the routines and and the shifts and and knowledgeable about um you know, the things that are 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 really important in um in our, you know, new normal. Um and then, you know, there there's gotta be a a thoughtful um and consistent approach with not just students, but also families. Uh and so, y- you know, in just a moment, uh we're gonna talk calendar and, you know, the 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 latest information, which just came out like literally right before this meeting started, is that the uh commissioner sent an email saying that uh, you know, we could officially officially uh we can have a one-hundred-and-seventy-day school year. Last Thursday, it was one-seventy-five. Friday, I heard one-seventy. Now officially, it's one-seventy. That provides us uh essentially ten days of professional development, uh which would is 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 gonna be gold uh in terms of our um planning and preparation. And uh when you see uh the draft calendar, um you'll you'll notice that um it's really our intention to front-load a number of those days anyway, uh because we think we really need to spend some time uh as a professional uh family, planning and 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 preparing. And as you specifically, as you uh raise a question about uh students on I E Ps, I mean, we know, we know that um uh the DESI guidance and and even separate and apart from the DESI guidance, we know that um for some of our students, um in-person instruction needs to be prioritized. Um and DESI guidance calls for prioritizing uh in-person instruction for students in uh sub-separate classrooms. Um our philosophical, you know, sort of foundation calls for the same. And so um no, but again, I go back to, you know, how do you do that? Well, you do it slow. Um that means not having, you know, the entire student body back on day one. That means about means thinking about uh a very thoughtful, strategic, um you know, and slow re-entry so that um folks can get comfortable, folks can get familiar. Um what that looks like exactly, I don't know. I don't know just yet. Uh I mean, literally, uh this one-hundred-and-seventy-day thing uh is is official today. Uh and so, you know, when that survey was sent, we thought we were still uh operating on a hundred-and-eighty days. Um uh i- in so and actually, in some of the guidance that was released uh just on Friday, it says a hundred-and-eighty days. Uh nine-hundred hours at the elementary level, nine-hundred-and-ninety hours at the secondary level. And so we can only ask questions based on what we know at the time and things shift. Uh and we're gonna shift uh accordingly, but um uh that's where we are right now.
Thank you. And just to just to kind of clarify for, you know, wearing a mask, wh- how are we, when we talk about pre-existing respiratory conditions, um how are we gonna accommodate these students who have asthma, sensory issues? I know we talked about it in our governance and communications, but the people out there, the folks out there, my constituents who who are worried about these uh these um these scenarios, wh- are we cultivating, are we figuring out where these students are? How and and if if so, what is an adjustment? What's the scenario for them?
Well, I mean, you know, I I I think there obviously there's gonna need to be exceptions uh for the mask rule. Uh and and maybe, you know, someone may not be able to mi- wear a mask, but maybe a shield uh is acceptable. Uh you know, and some students, as you just suggested, have sensory issues, can't have, you know, anything on their head or face. And so we've gotta um, you know, come up with plans that keep those students safe if they're uh here for in-person instruction. Uh keep the staff that are working with them safe, keep their classmates uh safe to the extent that we can. We know there's gonna be exceptions. I think everybody knows that. Um but uh, you know, w- we also don't want to mince words a- around the seriousness of um, you know, with which we're taking um the health and safety piece, and we also um want to be firm uh in communicating to the community and agreeing with the medical community about uh one of the two things that I hear consistently that uh mitigates transmission, and that's physical distancing and the mask.
Yeah, and and just a brief, uh so I've had um constituents concerned, or actually, because we're really studio orientation about just using P P, kind of normalizing it, being building that routine. Uh do we plan on, I know we have we have two town halls. Are we planning on a a a studio orientation kind of ki- when we roll back out, whatever way we do, have, you know, what are we gonna do to orientate families and students to our new normal? And also, that that has a lot to do with engagement with our our staff as well, um especially um, that's a lot of work. So how are we gonna, what is this, is there an orientation to have to prepare? And and we're we're looking at, it's July twenty-seventh. We have families very worried. We don't know what the plan is, and I think there's a lot of suspense there. Um and we and I know there's so much, obviously, there's so many moving parts to it. Um and I and I do appreciate you mentioning the go-out slow and steady, and I I also agree. They've taken it slow. It's very important um as we get as we plan and implement it. It is very important to do that, but we also need to get, we need to get kids prepared now. I think we we have kids who have experienced trauma, families experienced trauma uh through the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and definitely this adjustment. Uh and obviously, we we're doing as much as we can, but that 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 I would love to to learn more if we we are doing that or preparing for that, Patrick.
Yep. So uh I I'll just say quickly, um you know, if there's any level of frustration being felt by our families, by our staff, uh I I would say I equally uh feel that frustration. Um you know, as I will mention uh in my superintendent's report, and I think I just did, between July tenth and July twenty-fourth, six enormous pieces of guidance released to bring to bear on our planning, just understanding those. If you just took the special education guidance alone, um that's weeks of interpretation, drilling down to specifics. There's five other things that came out. Uh and so um, you know, I I I'm gonna invite um the community, our our staff, our families uh to join me in 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 being patient and understanding that um when a plan is rel- released, I want it to be the plan. I don't want it to be a plan that's gonna change two days later. That's just gonna cause confusion and more frustration among families. And I think we all know, there was a district one week after the initial guidance came out that released its plan. Uh well, guess what? That plan has had to take on five or six different iterations since its release. I don't think that's wise or responsible. Uh and so uh, you know, in the communication that I shared with families uh last week, a little bit of an update uh as to where we are. Uh I'm gonna respect the commissioner's request that we not release plans until early August. Uh and I, when those plans are released, um you can rest assured that, you know, the pieces around like how we're gonna bring students into um, you know, understanding and to a degree, to the degree possible, comfort with uh, you know, the new routines and the difference in school. I mean, this, these are the conversations that we have regularly. Uh do we have a plan around it just yet? No. Uh you've gotta start with the big pieces and get down to the smaller pieces. And it's going to be, you know, a situation where we're we're planning up until, you know, the first day probably. Um but, you know, this is the situation that we're in. Uh I I don't blame anybody. I mean, DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, needs to do its research before it really they release their guidance. That takes time. When they release the guidance, we've gotta make sense of it uh and and think about very carefully. Uh so we're talking about people's health and 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 safety here. We've gotta think about very carefully what that would mean in not a small district. That takes time. Uh and so um, you know, I I I I I feel that frustration. Uh I think everybody knows. I live in another town. I mean, that I I read that superintendent's uh information. Uh it's looks the same as mine. Uh it's it's kind of like it's coming, uh and it it there there are a lot of moving pieces. Um but I'm just asking for folks' patience.
Thank you, Patrick.
Member Nicholson, member Sadoway, then member Gailey.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Dr. Talwiler, for that presentation um and for for soliciting that that feedback. That's so important and and so helpful, and 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 I've seen you doing that in other ways as well with the forums. Um I think it's just really important that we have that uh the survey feedback and also sort of that two-way interactive feedback. I think people really appreciate and and your transparency and what you just said and 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 what parts that we don't know yet and parts that we are still working on. Um I think people really appreciate hearing that, so so thank you. And thanks also to all the staff and families and students who who shared that feedback. That it's it's incredibly helpful. Um so my first question was about the technology. I'm curious how the results compared with some of the assumptions we had been making about um h- how many were percentage had had access. And then I think if we look at the, we were talking earlier about sort of the representative sample. I think it's fair to assume that the the people who filled out the survey probably have disproportionately more access to technology than people who who wouldn't have filled out the survey. Um and it's a it's a low, not that it's not on the internet, but as a percentage, you know, you do the math. We were talking about several hundred families. Um and so uh in addition to how does this compare to our assumptions, what efforts are we making to sort of proactively reach every one of those families to make sure that they're online?
Yeah. So thank you for that. And and, you know, I I I think, jeez, uh maybe a month or so ago, maybe two months ago, we were we're having this discussion uh in this forum about uh families and connectivity. Uh and actually, I think I filled out a survey for DESI, and I I guessed uh that around twenty percent of our families um did not have um wireless um Wi-Fi connection uh at home. And I still don't know uh with a high degree of certainty how many families don't have uh an internet connection. And I'll, I agree with you that um certainly uh one might think that, you know, well, if they're responding to the survey, which is, you know, via internet, they they probably have some sort of connection. Although I did text message the survey home to families, so they they've got a phone. They could have done it on on that. Uh but I'll say that um, you know, in order for um a hybrid model or a remote learning model to work, which we want them to desperately, um then you've gotta make sure um that families have the connection at home. You gotta make sure um that students have the device. And so uh as you know, I mean, we've been ongoing with our um uh device uh distribution plan, and it, you know, it's going swimmingly. We've got, you know, pretty significant numbers, three, four hundred folks showing up on a day uh to pick up the device. When they do so, we're asking. Uh and we've got Spanish-speaking texts there uh as well. We're asking, do you have an internet connection in your home? Uh and if the answer is no, we're getting them set up uh with Comcast. And this is gonna be something uh that we're gonna continue to do uh and and will ramp up um certainly as we get toward the end of the month of August, because we really need for that to happen, for them to have that connectivity uh in order for this to be successful. Um and so uh that's sort of our tact with that. And as as I mentioned in the presentation, um we asked families, uh, you know, if you say no, you know, please call this number so we can so we can get you connected. Uh and no doubt, soon as that survey went out, uh the there was an uptick in calls. Um we don't have high numbers of families who's taken advantage of that thus far, and Kevin's on on the line now. It's it's double digits. It's not yet reached the hundred. Um but, you know, again, we're we're gonna continue with the messaging. Uh when the families are coming to pick up the devices, we're gonna continue there. Uh in the coming weeks, we'll we'll go to social media. Uh, you know, we'll employ the the all-call system. It it won't work if families don't have the connection.
Do do we have the ability or the resources to be able to start and say, this is the list we're sending out? That this is the list of families in our district, and this is a list that have confirmed that they are online at home and and logged in to learn online?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. I I don't know. Um I don't know.
When I think of my laptop for my daughter, one of the questions they asked me is if I had internet connection at home. So someone was taking that data, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I, I'd love for us to try to, to think about a way to make sure that we can say by, by, you know. September, October, that yes, everybody's logged on. Uh, I think we should make that a goal of ourselves. And the other question I had in, in.
You know, it's, it's early yet and I just mentioned that, you know, the, the, the ink just dried today on the commissioner. Uh, reducing the school year to one hundred and seventy days. Um, but you know, if in that draft calendar, which, which still need to be. Uh, negotiated with uh, the unions. Um, but if that approach is the approach we end up taking, um. That period of time uh, before the first day of school. When staff is doing, you know, professional development and planning together, collaborating. That can also be a time for some significant family outreach. To make sure that, um, you know, that we'd have staff also, uh, to make sure that families have the connection.
Right. And, and I'm sure that's something we can get the community involved in as well. And we think about other ways to reach people. Um, so I think that's great. Um, my other question was, I think it's clear from the data and I'm glad you asked that question, uh, just how people are feeling and, and people are feeling nervous and, and totally understandably. Uh, in the, in the, in the, the, the way, as, as we watch the economy reopen and businesses reopen, I think one of the things that has been. Effective, uh, talking to, to small businesses is that the staged approach and like, or the phased approach and also the sort of. Faith that the state is attempting to instill in people that they're looking at the data and these decisions are being made on data and being explicit about. When they're gonna go from one phase to another, what metrics they have to see, when they would, what they would have to see for them to go backwards. I, I sort of presume in the way that we are, that been asked to come up with three different plans that they're expecting. Between modes, right? And if things got bad enough. Uh, in terms of a spike or resurgence, that we would, that we would, you know, move from in-person to hybrid or hybrid to, to remote. Has there been any kind of uh, communication from DESI about? What are the metrics they're, they're looking for in order to make those kind of decisions and what they would need to see in terms of a surge? Uh, to, to change the recommendations?
Uh, yes. Well, you know, I'm in my office. I gotta turn my light back on. And the AC is off. I apologize to Don. I know he's probably hot down there. So I apologize, Don. Um. So, uh, what the commissioner's consistently said and actually, um. Uh, Lynn English teacher asked this question in the, in the listening session that we've just finished, like. Whose decision is it, right? Uh, on what mode you start in, uh, in-person, hybrid, uh, remote? Um, he, he did not ask this, but uh, I, I, I think a, a closely related. Question would be, whose decision is it? Um, to, you know, go full remote or move back to in-person? Um, and what the commissioner has consistently said. Uh, is that, you know, these are local decisions. Uh, and so I think that is up to us, um. Uh, or, or up to me to decide, you know, if there's a, a situation in a school. Uh, or in schools or in the community along in partnership with Mayor McGee to say. You know, now we need to shift back to, uh, you know, shift in one direction uh, or the other. Um, you know, admittedly, the, there's been rapid release of guidance, uh, you know, over the past week and change. I don't have it all committed to memory. Uh, there could be something in the um, facilities guidance, uh, or potentially in the scenarios guidance that offers. More specificity, a suggestion around what a school district might do. Um, but ultimately I know that it's, it's up to us.
Great. Yeah. And if that's the case, I would, I would just suggest like, looking at that data and seeing that, that people are nervous and are, and are. Uh, I think it would be helpful for us to start to think about how we could communicate prospectively, what we're gonna be looking at. Public health wise, to make sure that we are, are, uh, to share and what we're looking for to make those decisions. Thank you.
Member Satellite, then member Gailey.
Thank you, Patrick, for the, um, uh, for this update on, on the surveys. I, I have a couple of questions, um. But before I get into it, I just wanted to say congratulations on your five years uh, being with Lynn Public Schools.
Thank you.
Just last week, uh, you know, um, so I just wanted to. So, uh, what are we doing with regards to the schools that were determined to be in need of services prior to COVID? Um, uh, and what additional uh, resources will we be giving them um, during this time? Obviously they had some challenges prior to COVID and they don't just disappear. So if we're gonna go to a hybrid or, um. Uh, uh, I, I guess you can say online type schooling. Uh, what are we doing with regards to um, equity? Because it can't just be equal, um, if these schools uh, were in need of additional services prior to. So. I, I'd like to know what you have, uh. With regards to plan for that. Um, and then, um. Pre-COVID, we still had multiple school buildings that were a hundred years old. Um, and, and my daughter goes to Pickering and I'm worried about sending her there. You know, there's, there's sometimes issues with heat. Sometimes there's. Issues with pretty much everything in that school because it's old. Um. Air quality is extremely important, especially if you're gonna be uh, in a building uh, as, as old as that. And I know that you were working with. Uh, the, um, Mr. Donovan and an outside company to, to test the air quality. Uh, but you know, those are concerns. Cause if you look at uh, the, um, one of the survey questions, you ask how comfortable families feel. If you look, uh, there are more that say that they're a little comfortable and not at all than the rest. So I'm not the only one that feels this way as a parent.
So I, I'll work backward. Um, so, uh, well. Uh, the, the, the ISD is, um, is partnering with a third-party, um, environmental consultant. Who will do an analysis on all of the buildings that I'll make public. Uh, and families can make the decision uh, as to whether or not, and you know, it helped them to make sense of it. Whether or not they want to send their child. They, they do have the right to keep them home. Uh, and we've got a responsibility, one that we take seriously to, to educate them. Uh, and that, by the way, is an entirely, uh, you know, that's, that's a, a conversation uh, unto itself. Um. And then I would say, if you, you say, um, s- schools that had needs, I, I, I think you mean in the accountability.
Yes.
Uh, descriptor, um, if I could just, uh, ask Kim to, uh, unmute herself and talk a little bit about the work that, um. Uh, is being done with DESI, that work has not stopped, actually. Go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, I mean, the, the grant work that's being done, Washington applied for a literacy grant. Um, that will provide coaching and monitoring, um, assessment work, early screening work. Also placing a full-time math coach there. Um, what that coaching, how that coaching will be done is, is, is another story. But in terms of providing schools under the framework of support, whether it's classical. And Deb certainly can. We're gonna continue to provide those schools with extensive support.
Okay. And, um, thank you. Uh, and then the, just the last, uh, point I wanted to make, Patrick, is. Uh, with regards to the, um, questions about if it's gonna be a one-day, a two-day, half-a-day. Uh, or, or some type of hybrid. I feel as though the one that's gonna take as most, uh, as many resources is the half-day, because you're gonna have to have someone go in there and clean in the morning. In the middle of the day, at the end of the night. And that's gonna be a tremendous amount of, of, of resources. Uh, just with that, because we're competing with everybody else to make sure that we have the, uh, right amount of, of. Of PPE and, and just cleaning supplies in general. In a half a day. These kids have to be safe when they come in, you know, and then you even look at the, the issues we have with the, the pre-K with the half-days. Parents don't like it because they, they work a full day. So it's kind of difficult to, to then, uh. Somehow get your, your, your kid out of school if it's gonna be a half a day. So. When I saw that and I saw the, the feedback, I, I was surprised.
Yeah. You know, I, um, we offered both four choices. Um, you know, do I have a personal favorite? Yes, I do. But. I, I think you can learn, uh, and, and are there logistical challenges to some of. Oh, you're actually, you know, prohibitive, um, um, challenges with some of the, the models. I'd say, yeah, but I think there's something you can learn, uh, and what people choose, uh, about what they think is important. Uh, what they think would be helpful. I think people who select a, you know, that five-day, half-day. Um, uh, hybrid option, you know. Might not be thinking about the, you know, the, the, the cleaning and sanitizing that would need to happen across the entire school. Before the second group comes in. They might not be thinking about that. But maybe, you know, the knee-jerk was, you know, one of. Geez, you know, I would really like for my kid to have something consistent in person. You know what I'm saying? Yeah. So I, I still think that there's, there's a, there, there are nuggets of wisdom. Uh, there, even though that pulling that off would be, uh, almost impossible.
Thank you.
Safely, anyway. Or Gailey?
Patrick. My, um, question, uh, my, my concerns. Uh, focused on what I'm hearing out in the community, um, primarily from our professionals. And, um, they posed a question. That was posed to me was like, it's July twenty-seventh, it's almost August first. Where's our professional development? How are we gonna know how to use Schoolology? Where's professional development? And then I'm thinking. Where is the, is the professional development happening? Is it gonna just happening in that, in those ten days from one seventy to one eighty days, those ten extra days they're giving us? Uh, um, um, going back to school, those ten days. So do we have professional development plan? Do we have student development on technology? I'm focusing on technology, Patrick. And how about family, um, development on technology? Cause the parents are gonna be at home. To help the students with the technology that they are learning from their teachers. And if their teachers don't know, they're gonna be. Very confusing opening. There will be. And the second thing is. If we go to a hybrid. I expect the professionals, I expect the students and I expect the families all to be trained on how to use the technology that we're giving them the opportunity. To have. So I just wanna know, where are we now with this professional development or technology?
So, um, I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna marginalize the feedback that you're getting, um, from staff members. It's important and. Certainly I encourage them to reach out, uh, to, to even to me or. To the deputy superintendents, their principal, if they have a concern. Uh, about Schoology, but I'd say now, I don't know what the number is now, but at last glance, it's about five hundred. Um, teachers in the Facebook group, um, who have already begun sharing and, and. Um, sort of playing around with developing, uh, classes and coursework in Schoology. Uh, we've shared, um, the, you know, sort of video tutorials on how to get. Um, comfortable and acclimated. Um, I, you know, not for nothing, but I, I'm noticing, uh, the number of districts who are choosing that. Uh, as a learning management system, just in the past couple of weeks. Uh, grow, uh, because of its ease of use. Uh, and the general feedback, I mean, we've not surveyed, this is not a scientific. Um, statement here, but, uh, the general feedback has been really positive, uh, around. Um, its accessibility and its, uh, user-friendliness. Um, so, um, you, you know, this, this is, what, what you're describing is what makes this really challenging. Um, and, and.
The professional development, is that just through Facebook?
Uh, no, no.
So that's my question is. When is the professional development gonna be offered to all the teachers? That's basically what I'm asking, so that they can train the students and then the students can. They can all work together. So that's what I'm asking. When, when is it gonna happen? So I can at least say, oh, they're doing that. The first week of August. Or they're planning on doing this the second week of August, you know? That's the question I'm asking.
Sure, sure, uh.
But they've attempted to do Facebook and they're not getting it. So it's like they need to get trained.
Okay. Uh, so I, I would, you know, again, I would respectfully ask you that you ask those staff members, um. To reach out to myself or to Shannon Banfield. I mean, we're happy to, to help them, uh, begin to untie some of the knots with access. Um, the Facebook group is not the professional development. It's merely an opportunity. For staff who, uh, are, are interested and willing to begin to, you know, sort of play around with it and get familiar. Some are taking it, you know, you know, much more seriously than that and like actually beginning to put things together. Uh, it's an opportunity for people to get a preview, um, to it. Uh. The more, you know, at this point in the summer, I, I can't mandate professional development. We can only do that. Um, when the school year has begun or when staff are contractually. Uh, obligated to participate. And so, uh, what I can tell you is that that will be. A priority, uh, around professional learning, uh, at the very beginning. Um, do I have for you scripted a, a day-by-day, uh, PD plan? I, I don't at this point. Remember. That the ink just dried today.
No, I know. I understand, Patrick.
But also remember, also remember that two weeks ago. Uh, we really, we would have had maybe one or two days, right? Uh, where we would have to prioritize. You know, what are we gonna actually do around professional development to get staff ready for kids? And. I'd say Schoology is very, very important, the, uh, learning management system, but so is mental health. Um, so is, uh, assessment, uh, you know, and so. Um, now that we have a clearer sense of, you know, what we have in terms of, potentially in terms of time. Uh, we can begin to, um, plan more, uh, you know. Uh, add more detail to, uh, potential plans. And so. Uh, if anyone says, is the learning management system gonna be a priority in terms of staff learning? Uh, at the beginning of the year, the answer to that is absolutely. Uh, and that plan is forthcoming. I see Deputy Superintendent Rogero and I think Deputy Superintendent Powell has had some comments on that. And I know, um. Member Ford and then Member Capola will be questions next. Um. Deputy Superintendent Rogero, I think you're on, you're on mute. There you go. Still muted. Yeah.
So. I just wanted to assure Lorraine that we have multiple teams in place right now. In terms of planning for that professional development, both on the learning management system, Schoology. On what blended learning is gonna look like. But also in the realm of mapping and how we're gonna teach the different standards, how we're gonna accelerate the learning. So that all these teams have been put in place to provide extensive professional development at the opening of school and ongoing throughout the school year, Lorraine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Ford and then Member Capola. John?
Yeah, I had to figure it out. I'm gonna mute myself. Um. Two quick points. One, one to agree with what Michael said. Um, about Pickering. Pickering is a disaster. Uh, we have several like that. I, you know. I know, Mayor, you were in line, you had money lined up to, we should already be in the pipeline with the new school coming down. And COVID wiped that out. And I, I don't see us getting the new school for five years in the current situation. Uh, but IST does a great job, but. We're gonna have ongoing problems with windows, air quality, heating, which the, the old system pushes it from one end of the building to the other. Uh, these are gonna be issues we're gonna have to live with. And I'd like to throw something out. It's, it's probably gonna be very unpopular. You're gonna kill me, but I'm, I'm ready.
Who's gonna kill you?
Always. But this is what I texted to you earlier, uh, Patrick, was. You know, maybe we should have a united front and just bite the bullet and say, we're gonna start. On remote learning. And then work our way into, into something. Right now. We, between DSC, we get changing marching orders almost every other week. We could come up with a foolproof plan. It's a great concept. And two weeks before school is to start, DSC could say, oh, we're changing the rule again. I would think if we. Took our time right now and said, start with remote and work into hybrid. But do it, you know, systematically and, and with a goal and a purpose and a design. You know, I, I just think right now we're taking a lot of chances. And I just heard before this meeting. The president of UMass, um, Boston said to open up. Um, with the kid, with the students on hand is next to suicide. That may be just his opinion, but I just think this thing is spiking. We get, we get issues all around us. That may be just his opinion, but I just think this thing is spiking. We get, we get issues all around us. Sure.
Well, the point, the points, the point's definitely well taken, John. Member Capola?
Hey, uh, Dr. Teller, I have two questions for you. On the, um, hundred and seventy days that they just, um, Desi has just addressed with us, what's the length of days? You know how they tell us like nine hundred hours or, you know?
Yeah, uh, so just to be clear, I, I, I mind the norms, I was not reading my email during the email, during the, uh, the session. Um, but I, I saw eight fifty for elementary, uh, and I didn't get a chance to see what it is, uh, for secondary. Uh, I don't know if Kim or Deb, uh, saw that, and I know Sheila was on the line but has, uh, left us, so. Um, but they did, I mean, my point is to say that they did reduce, um, the number of hours for time on learning, uh, given the shorter school year.
Okay. Um, my next question is the elephant in the room, and I almost hate to ask it, but, um, the word is COVID nineteen. So how are we addressing that? We have, you know, we have so many in that community, you know, whether it might have been some of our students, their family members, you know, and there could be new cases. How are we, is Kathy McNulty involved in making the decisions for, you know, what are we doing? Are we testing, are we doing temperature tests? Are we, you know, reaching out to families? I mean, I know, you know, things are confidential too, but it's also, you know, do we want, we want, do we want our kids to be nice and clear that, you know, if they wake up that morning and, you know, they find out mom is positive for COVID, you know, just test comes back, how, how good are we at letting the families know what we expect of them? You know, and are we expecting that they're not, you know, they're not to send their kids to school? Or, you know, what, what's, where are we with that? Because we haven't talked about COVID nineteen and the medical part of it at all.
So, uh, I, I'll just say quickly first, to answer the other half of your question, thank you, Christina Colella. Uh, it's nine thirty-five instead of nine ninety, uh, at the secondary level in terms of hours, uh, for time on learning. Uh, and so, um, uh, Kathy McNulty is intimately involved, uh, in the planning. If you recall, the, um, four sort of, uh, big buckets of the work that we divided up to plan for the reopening, um, she and, um, Kevin McHugh were the leads on the, uh, health and safety, uh, piece of the operation. Uh, and just last week, uh, we had a meeting, Kathy McNulty, Deb Tanser, uh, her assistant, along with, uh, MJ Duffy, uh, from the city's board of health, um, just to make sure that our thinking thus far, um, aligned, um, to the letter, um, with their thinking around, um, you know, health and safety. The questions you asked, um, about, you know, messaging to families, outreach around, you know, what families should be doing every day before their kids come to school, what happens if, uh, uh, a student is ill? I mean, these are the kinds of communications, um, that we'll have to develop, uh, and acquaint families with. Um, the scenarios guidance, which came out, uh, the Friday before last lays out really clearly what happens if a student or staff member, uh, is symptomatic, uh, at, at home versus at school or on the bus, uh, and the kinds of, and what happens, uh, if a staff member or student, uh, is diagnosed with COVID nineteen? What messaging has to go out to families, what steps they have to take, uh, after that? Uh, and so, um, these are things that, you know, will, will be part and parcel of the protocols and messaging, uh, to families. Um, it has not been put out yet, uh, cause I think it'll be, or I know it'll be part of our planning. Uh, and I, I don't wanna, you know, send out bits and pieces of it, cause I, I think it'll just get lost and it'll be confusing for families. I would much rather wait, uh, until we, the, the plan is complete, uh, and that we determine a very thoughtful and strategic, um, communication plan with multiple opportunities for families to ask questions, uh, with multiple, um, you know, information community, communicated in multiple platforms, uh, and mo- multiple mediums. These are the kinds of things that have to happen in the coming weeks, and I, and I know there's not tons of time. Uh, but again, you know, you know, as I, as I mentioned, between July tenth and July twenty-fourth, all of this is coming out in sort of rapid fashion, uh, and so we've gotta take it and build it, interpret it, uh, think about where it fits, um, uh, and how to execute it, uh, in our plan in the Lynn Public Schools, and then thoughtfully communicate it thereafter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have, I have a couple of points or questions as well, or I don't know if they're points or, or they're questions or more comments. Um, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about how we deal with this and nationally, every day this changes. Um, getting, getting, uh, new guidance today reflects the reality that we face. Um, the reality that face masks are a clear and important piece of whatever we're going to do, even though there's gonna be reluctance, uh, the, the more and more data reflects that even, even a handkerchief over your nose and mouth is protecting you and other people around you much more than I think people really anticipate. So, um, what's it gonna look like? What happens if two or three in a certain classroom are testing positive? What does that mean for the, for the, for the protocol? What is the protocol? Are we, uh, you know, are we done? So how do, if we, if, if the plan does, and there's a hybrid of discussion here, what does the plan end up looking like? Anywhere from, you know, all remote to in-class and, and all on the above, and I know that that's, the Desi has indicated all three options and it's a local, uh, local discussions to be made. Buildings, air quality, um, airflow, um, ventilation. There's a lot of things that are, I know, Doctor, you're looking at as you go day to day, uh, related to all of these questions, um, and what, what are the, what are the protocols gonna be moving forward? And, and, and again, what's going on in other states is helping us determine at the state level, what, what the reality is, and, and again, it's changing from day to day, what, how many, you know, and, so it's, it's, uh, it's hard to say, is the plan today, what's it gonna, what is it going to look like? But I think we, you know, from my perspective, we need to continue to get as much data as possible so that we understand what the safest way to do what we need to do to get kids educated in the community and making sure that the support is there across the board to do that. And I know that's the commitment from all of us, but it is, it is evolving. Uh, and again, I think that Desi is still trying to come up with the air. What's the right proposals, uh, as this continues to change and more data comes in? Uh, uh, so, um, really not a question, but more of a comment that we're all in really challenging times trying to deal with, uh, ensuring what we all really care about, and that's getting these children in our community the best possible education they can get, but also recognizing we're dealing with, uh, something that we've never faced before. So it really is a, it really is a challenge. I see Member Sadaway has a question or a comment as well, but, uh, uh, I think we are, you know, and I wanna, I know that there's been hours and hours of work going on to really put some plans together, and I thank the administration for the continuing work they do and the guidance we're looking for from the administration and from Desi. And I think that the kind of protocols that will be proposed related to what happens if once we are back to school and how do we continue to limit the, the spread in our community and our schools, so, uh, Member Sadaway?
Thank you. Um, I, I just have, uh, two questions, Patrick. Um, and before I get there, I just wanna reiterate what the, what the mayor is saying as well. As an attorney, you know, you have, we have a hundred and ten people that have passed away, so this is a, a real, this is real, you know? So masks are important. Of, of the hundred and ten, I've had to probate ten of those people, uh, 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 their estate. It's, it's, it impacts families, it impacts, that one person is gonna impact hundreds of people when they pass away. So we, we have to take it serious. I understand people are against masks and there are so many things going on, but I see it on the other end. And it, it's not fun. It's, it's not a, a good experience for these families. So, you know, we, we have to take this thing serious. Um, and, and other thing I wanted to know is, wh- what, what are you, are, are you taking into consideration either, uh, Mr. The Mayor or Superintendent Tutwiler, what we're hearing from the federal administration about, uh, tying certain money to, uh, requirement of, of having in-person classes? Is this even in the forefront of your, your decision-making, uh, on a local level?
I, I can speak for myself, absolutely not. Uh, I'm not convinced that that is gonna be real. Uh, and I think the, the explosion of cases in many states that hadn't been impacted before is changing the political dynamic as much as the, the, the health dynamic. So the, the, the decisions we're, I'll speak from, and I, I'm sure Dr. Tutwiler feels the same way. Decisions we're making are for the best interests of the children in our community and the safety in our community. And, um, you know, we're the ones that are on the ground understanding what we need to do to make sure that the decisions we make are the right decisions. They may not be popular in the end, but they're gonna be made with the best interests of the students, the health of our community, um, and not on, on, uh, some kind of threats or other, um, proposals that are coming from, uh, members, you know, the different people in the federal government at the federal level. And I do think the political dynamic's changing, and, and another piece of this is, um, the reality of the dollars that are gonna be necessary to address this at the local level. And that, um, I, I think the Senate is going to have to act, uh, whether they act completely on fully, uh, and, uh, on what the House did, but I think the Senate is starting to realize that they really need to come to the table on schools, on support, on PPE, on, on the kind, you know, face, we, we in our city face different dynamics because of our buildings. That, you know, I'm, I'm optimistic that in the end, the, 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 the right decisions will be made in the US Senate, uh, to, to, uh, address some of these things that we're all facing. And Dr. Tutwiler spoke to it, every community is trying to, um, deal with this issue, so. Uh, I think it's a great question, Michael, but that's not, and I'll let Dr. Tutwiler speak to that as well. So, yeah, the, the, we're, we're, we're all here together, we're gonna make the right decisions for our community. And if there is some kind of attempt to pull the plug on federal dollars, that'll be a, um, um, a large and robust, a response against that kind of, those kind of efforts that are gonna impact children in our community.
And, and Patrick, I don't know if you, uh, mentioned it a, at all, but, um, for, uh, for the parents like me that still don't know what's going on, um, and I know Brian, you know, his question was, was geared towards this, but th- there are informations due at some particular point in time, right? There's deadlines that Desi has set, and, and we plan to meet those, and then we plan to, uh, share that information with families once we're able to, to get to that particular point. Have you shared any dates or that's not something that you, you've done?
Um, there's a non-binding draft of the initial plan, and, and mind you, uh, having scrutinized the form that we're supposed to complete, I think this is really, um, Desi's attempt to get a sense for what districts are thinking, right? It's not non-binding, you don't necessarily need a vote, this, this, what are you thinking? Uh, because there, there's, remember what came out on June twenty-fifth is initial guidance. I've not, that means later, final guidance is coming at some point. Uh, and I, I suspect, uh, that once they, uh, analyze the data from districts, uh, and their initial guidance, um, uh, then, then something will come out shortly thereafter. There's a final plan, uh, that is due August tenth. Uh, and, you know, who knows what can happen in that, uh, in that ten days, but I assume something will happen. Uh, and their, so their, uh, request was that districts not share their plans until early August. Uh, and so, um, you know, we've got two, um, you know, virtual town halls scheduled with the community on the sixth, uh, and then again on the tenth. Uh, I believe that's right. And so, uh, I mean, we're, we're right there, um, with the release of the final plan. And much as I told the staff, uh, the two hundred and, I don't know, I think it was the, saw two forty at max, uh, who were listening and participating, uh, a couple of hours ago, um, I plan to do that more frequently, uh, with them. Uh, even if I don't have anything new to offer, I mean, it's just an opportunity for us to engage. I'll be, I'll be doing the same thing with the community. It's actually very easy to set up.
And you might not have new things to say, but there might be new people that have things to.
Correct.
Speak about. So that's good that you're giving them the opportunity. And if we, we do fall around that timeframe, it's still giving families about thirty days to, to, to know what's going on if we do this new, the new calendar. So, I, thank you.
Member Castellos, and, um, Member Galey, do you have your hand up as well? Go ahead, Member Castellos.
So I, I just wanted to, um, also just kinda share some thoughts that I got from, um, some students over at Lynn Tech. Um, there were some concerns about, you know, the, the, those students that who are going into eleventh, twelfth grade, um, shops, auto body, um, you know, those students who, when you work at an auto body, they have PPE, they, they kinda exercise and they get their hours in shops that are, um, equipped. Um, but I did, um, have the opportunity to kinda reach out to certain auto bodies, kinda see what they've been doing in the past, uh, I know co-ops that, that have taken Lynn Tech students. Um, for, for Lynn Tech, it's, uh, what, what are we looking at in terms of just, and, and they have a, obviously a different, um, scenario for them? How are we preparing our vocational students? How are we, what are we doing? What does the guidelines look like in terms of just their opportunities and their chances for, um, obviously, uh, we have a hybrid situation potentially, uh, we haven't made a decision yet, but what is Desi saying for, for schools like Lynn Tech, who are, who is also urban, we're in an urban district, so what are we, what are we looking at for, for that?
Yeah, so, uh, Desi's not released any guidance for vocational schools. Uh, and so, uh, that does not mean that there can't be thinking and planning applied to, uh, a reopening scenario, but, um, you know, you, you, you gotta be careful not to go too far down that road, uh, because you might end up having to double back and that's, that's, that's time that we just, we, we're not gonna have. And so, um, Chris Akarakitis, uh, and if, if you don't know her well, uh, you, you know, she's, she gets after it. Uh, she's very much, um, you know, in tune to, um, the initial guidelines for all schools and thinking about ways that, um, you know, we can provide a substantive experience for students in their respective shops. Some of them are easier at a physical distance than others. For example, uh, you know, the auto tech, potentially auto body shops, electrical, um, are, are sort of spacious, machine shop, uh, spacious, uh, health tech, not so spacious. Uh, and, and so, um, you know, there, there's gonna need to be some thinking around cohorting, around smaller groups. Uh, you know, maybe, you know, a hybrid scenario, we're only having smaller groups on, on, on campus, uh, at a particular time. Uh, the vocational school is already well-practiced in, you know, the proverbial, uh, the A B week model, uh, especially in the grades eleven and twelve when kids do, uh, you know, a week in their shops and then a week in their, um, core content, uh, classes. And so, um, they are, you know, beginning to mold and shape, um, a plan, but you, you, you kinda need that guidance and there isn't any right now, um, for us to plan around.
Well, thank you, Patrick. I, I do want to just, also, so what adjustments are being made for discovery? And I know that's something too, I don't, I really haven't heard much about, uh, those plans and adjustments. What are we doing for, for that?
Deb, do you wanna speak to that?
Okay, is she here? Okay, uh, I can't, I can't. So, um, Dr. Tutwiler is, is, could she be muted from, uh, our end? Cause it looks like she's unmuting and then we can't hear her.
Uh, she's unmuted, but we can't hear her.
Oh, no. Oh, we can hear her now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Um, well, so I just wanna reassure you that Karissa Karakitis and her team are working very diligently, trying to think outside the box for not only the high school side of Lynn Tech. Um, we're very disappointed that the Department of Ed has not provided any guidance on vocation. It's almost like they've just forgotten about them. Um, but they're being really creative in their thinking, uh, on the shops that it's not as easy to space out. Um, she's talking about possibly even building in. She's talking about possibly even building individual workspaces for students. And in terms of the discovery students, they are looking at a couple of different options, but similar to the high school where it would be a week on, a week off, you know, a week on with academics and a week on of like vocational discovery activities. But we're still in the planning stages, but they are working very diligently to try and accomplish that scenario for all students at Tech.
Thank you, Deb.
I think that just highlights the real challenge DUCI is facing. I don't think it's that they've thrown their hands up. I think they're just really challenged on some of these, some of these recommendations they need to make related to the whole, the bigger picture. And I think, Donnie, you were speaking to it, COVID-19 and what it all means. So I think it's just part of the puzzle that continues to be, find the pieces to come together. Any other questions or thoughts on this? And I think finally on the agenda then, Dr. Tuttwiler, do you want to speak to the calendar?
Calendar, indeed.
I think we've kind of talked about it, but do you want to?
Uh, yeah, I mean, essentially what I'd like to, especially given the most recent communication from DUCI, I guess I'd like to ask for the school committee's permission to, you know, to work with the unions to develop an MOA for a calendar for next year. I can screen share a draft, a potential draft of a calendar that's a 170-day model, making clear though that it is just that. It is just a draft that would ultimately need to be, you know, accepted and a MOA drawn up with LTU and LSAA. I'm happy to do that right now.
I would like to make the motion to allow the superintendent to work with the union to come up with a calendar with the assistance of Attorney Mahos.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and second. And do we need a roll call on this, John? I think we typically roll call everything we do here on Zoom. I would suggest a roll call as well.
Mr. Cassianas?
I agree.
Thanks, John.
Okay, Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gayley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Satterway?
It's Satterway, yes.
And Mr. Mengee?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so then I think that'll take on that issue at this point and there'll be some discussions for the discussions there. Correct, Dr. Tuttwiler, as you move forward?
Correct.
Okay, great. And I think finally on the agenda, do you have some, Mayor, you've got a couple of questions there. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Member, put their hands up.
Uh, me, Jared.
Okay, member Nicholson?
Thank you.
Sorry for that, Jared.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question about the calendar. So that is going to be a negotiation between the administration and the union. Are there going to be any other opportunities to solicit input from other stakeholders, from families and students as well? And is that going to come back to us to get approval? Process is going to be?
Mayor, if I could answer that?
Yes, John.
Would have to come, any proposed memorandum of agreement would have to come back to the school committee for approval. So you'd have input at that time.
Great.
Does that answer your question, Jared?
Yeah, and then the first part, I guess, is what kind of opportunities for feedback will we get from families?
Yeah, and so, you know, that's a good question. We did not ask, you know, last spring, we asked a question about the start of the school year with families and, you know, gauging their interest about returning before Labor Day, which is, you know, not something that typically or has historically happened in the Lynn Public Schools. And they, you know, voted favorably for that. And so my only concern, I mean, we certainly could, after some conversations with the unions, put a, maybe a sample out or some features of the calendar and get some general feedback from families. And so my only worry is about time. You know, this is something that, you know, now that you've given me permission, I mean, we're going to, tomorrow we will be scheduling this to have these conversations. And there are a number of other things that need to be done in partnership with the unions. And so that's my only worry. I meant what I said in the outset of the presentation with the surveys that, you know, we believe really strongly in our decisions being input and/or feedback-driven. And so I just have to think about how to do that appropriately. We do have, and I've been meeting with an advisory over the past month. We just finished meeting four, we've got a tentative meeting scheduled for tomorrow. That could be one mechanism, is it, you know, a broad survey? It's not. But it's, you know, 35, 40 folks who represent a broad sample of our community, you know, our partners, parents, students, who could give us some immediate feedback. So I'll have to think about how to do that, but in short, I'm saying, yes, you know, we need to get some feedback on it.
Thank you.
Member Satterway? And here's a lawyer coming out, I'm sorry. So considering the negotiations, the committee is not going to have any involvement with this and this committee as a whole has given you the authority, Patrick, with John, I already have some concerns. Obviously, with our previous discussions that we've had in a vote with the vacation time, how we pushed it for some people, we added particular language that it's due to COVID, that's why we were doing it and it's not, it's not going to set precedent. So my thing is, once we're back to normal, I like the half-days, okay? So this new calendar shouldn't be reflective of how it's going to look from here on out because there's not always going to be 170 days.
Correct.
And we're also not forfeiting or giving up the ability to continue these early release days because those are very important. So I want to make sure that whatever we do in the MOU, because it's going to come to us once it's approved by the union and, you know, it could mess things up because we don't have a lot of time. I just want to make sure that you are, you have the understanding that this calendar is not going to be the example of what school is going to look like once COVID is hopefully gone.
I think that there are, well, I know that there are features in the most recent agreement with, with the unions that are both good for staff and good for students. And so I equally, I share in your desire to, you know, actualize those features once, you know, we're, I wouldn't call it back to normal, but once we've moved beyond needing to do, take such extreme measures.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thanks, member Satterway. Point's very well taken. Other questions? And then finally, if that's, if that's it on that, did you have anything on communications, Doctor?
I would just say, I would just say quickly, there were three documents provided to you that are provided to you annually from the Transportation Department. You know, these manuals, of course, the language in them don't reflect the guidance. We will likely need to either amend those manuals or add addendums to them as we create specific rules around, you know, around ridership. So I just wanted to point that out in the Communications and Information section. And then finally, my superintendent's report, you know, I got to tell you, someone's got to fix this automatic turn-off in my office. People tease me about my waving of the hands to get it to turn back on, but.
That's something that happens in my office, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, or I just need to get up and stand up during the meeting. The superintendent's report, you know, which I will post tomorrow morning, covers a lot of what we just talked about in depth, the struggle with involved or related to, you know, actually coming up with a plan and the slow release of guidance and the impact and complexity of the guidance that's released on planning. The superintendent's report talks about that, but then it also talks about in the beginning, you know, how, just as I laid out at the beginning of the PowerPoint, how we're not planning behind closed doors, that we're really making an effort, I'm really making an effort to solicit feedback. We've got, you know, email addresses set up for staff that they have been using and I have been reading. We've got an email address set up for families to convey concerns or ask questions and those are starting to come in as well. And we've got virtual town halls set up, two of them we've already executed, we're going to continue to do that. And that's really just a function of, you know, the mayor said earlier, that we really got to stick together on this. I don't want to give the air of, you know, behind the door, planning or give the air of not being thoughtful and careful about what people are and responding to what people are thinking and feeling at this point in time. It actually means a lot to me personally and means a lot to my team in terms of how we're thinking about plans. So that was the thrust of that superintendent's report. I'm happy to read it to you, but I think you get the gist.
Great, thank you. I think we get definitely get the take on what's going on, so I appreciate it. If there's no other questions or thoughts, it's been a really good discussion tonight on some really challenging issues we all face together. So we need to continue to work together to get through it. So thank you all for everything you do, superintendent on down. And with that, so entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls, no? Unanimous, the ayes have it? Thank you all, and I'll talk to you soon.
Great day.
All right. Have a good night, good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.